Committee to order and we will start with Dr. Burnham.
Good evening, everyone. As a preliminary matter, this is Dr. Burnham Superintendent of Schools. I will do a roll call to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Chair, Mrs. Carol Ashambo.
Yes.
Vice Chair, Mr. Brian Leighton.
Yes.
Secretary, Mrs. Laura Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Anthony School and Briney.
Yes.
And Mr. Peter Beardmore.
Yes.
And staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Recording Secretary, Ms. Susan Summers.
Yes.
Business Manager, Mr. Michael Cassidy.
Yes.
Executive Assistant to the Superintendent, Liz Peterson.
Yes.
And the Director of our Community School Programs, Mrs. Patty McCarthy Gillette.
Yes.
Okay, I'll turn it back to you now, Mrs. Ashambo.
Thank you very much. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being broadcast over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel and is streaming on Facebook Live. And this meeting of the Lunenburg School Committee is being conducted remotely. It is also being recorded. In accordance with the Governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, public meetings may be conducted remotely. The order, which you can find posted on the town website, on the COVID-19 Information Center page, access through the town manager's webpage allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Lunenburg School Committee is convening by telephone conference, video conference, via Zoom app, Facebook Live, etc., as posted on the town website identifying on how the public may join. For Zoom meetings, please note this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and that you take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. I, the Chair, Carol Ashambo, the Chair, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. When they conclude their remarks, the Chair will ask the members to provide any comment, question, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please speak in a way that is clear and helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait till the Chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the Chair, taking care to identify yourselves. And each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. Our first order of business this evening is public comment. Now, our public comment is generally divided into agenda items and into open items for whatever falls within the purvey of the committee. We did discuss it on meeting last week, changing that so that all public comments would be open at the beginning of the meeting. I don't think that's going to be an issue for this particular meeting. I think most of you are here to talk about agenda items. But just so you are aware, if you knew that had changed, we will vote on that change in protocol at our next meeting. So just a word about public comments. I just want to remind the public that the first, that the first public comment section this evening is for agenda items only. And the second public comment section is open to any topic within the scope of authority of the school committee. Public comments about individual students are prohibited to protect the privacy of the student per state and federal law. We have a three-minute, a 10-minute public comment section. That limit on time can be waived and most likely will be by the committee this evening. But there is a strict three-minute per person protocol. So that being said, Dr. Burnham, the last time we were unable to talk about this right before the meeting. So the last time we had a lot of participants, you kept track of who was going to speak. Will you be doing that this evening for us?
I absolutely can. We can have folks raise hand and I can call them by name.
That, that is the best way to do it. If you are having trouble raising hand on the app, it is found under, let's see, on my iPad, it's under more. And if you go under more, you'll find the raise hand. If you have a great deal of difficulty, do a lot of waving and somebody will probably notice you're waving. But there are more people than fit on the screen, obviously. So if you happen to notice someone is waving and nobody notices them, would you please let us know that that is occurring? So if you would like to speak, you may put your hand up. Now, also, the last time we did this, Mr. Cassidy, at the last minute, I am asking, is there a possibility of that clock? Or if that is not a possibility, is there a possibility you could be our timekeeper?
I'll try to get that clock. I do have it in my bookmark. I may have to go to full screen. I may have to take over. Or I can just give a, like a 20-second warning to wrap up.
A warning would be great. If you could do that, we would greatly appreciate that.
Could, could you just confirm the, the amount of time per speaker again?
It is three minutes per speaker.
Okay. I'll take care of that.
Thank you so much. All right, so with those things being taken care of, Dr. Burnham, what, what I also want to tell people before we turn this over is that I know I, I assume other members of the committee, do keep track of the comments that people make. I don't want you to think you're just talking and nobody's paying attention. So if you notice I'm not paying attention on the screen, I'm paying attention to what I'm writing. Okay, so Dr. Burnham, you may go ahead.
So when I call your name, if you would please state your full name and your address for the record. We'll start with Pauline.
Hi there. Thanks so much. Pauline Roy, 105 Chestnut Street. So I live within the 1.5 miles. I'm just reaching out because when I look at your policy, it states the purpose of school transportation is to get pupils who live in an unreasonable walking distance from home to school and back in an efficient, safe, and economical manner. And I guess my concern is first that this states unreasonable walking distance. So when we're looking at forcing those kids who are within the one and a half mile radius to walk to school, that's because we're assuming that it is a reasonable walking distance. And I would argue that in this town, it's probably not. There are very few houses where it is actually a safe and reasonable walking distance, especially for the kids in grades three through five. I think grades six through 12 could be looked at differently, but grades three through five is essentially where I'm focusing right now. Because then you also look and you have another policy that kids in grades pre-K through five cannot be dropped off at school without a parent present and cannot be picked up without a parent present, either off the bus, on the bus, or at the school building. So my concern is that we've essentially kind of pushed the the responsibility of the kids' transportation of those, the kids' transportation now onto the families. And this could be an undue hardship and it can also be an equity issue because not every parent has that flexibility to then walk their kid to school or drive them each day. I know for my husband and I, we both work in town. We are extremely blessed in that, and yet this is still going to be a hardship for us. We are still struggling to try and figure out how we're going to work our work schedules to accommodate this new time schedule that we have to do. And then just one more point of clarification is, you know, I've lived in this town for 20 years and while this policy's been in place since 2005, I have never heard of it being implemented before the last couple of years. This really, I mean, I reached out to people who have been here longer. I've only lived within the one and a half for nine years now. But I've had a kid go all the way through pre-K through grade 12 and never have I heard of this, the busing being taken away for these kids. Because while the policy is there, I think we've always kind of stated that this isn't as safe. This isn't, doesn't make sense in this town because of the nature of our roads, the traffic, the lack of sidewalks. So that's my argument is just, I really, I think we need to relook at that, especially for the grades three through five. I don't think it's safe and reasonable to expect them to walk and then to also transfer that burden onto the parents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Dr. Burnham?
Jennifer D. Francesco.
Hi, everybody. My name is Jennifer D. Francesco. I'm at 1345 Massachusetts Ave. And I'm going to dovetail right off of what Pauline has shared with us and her concerns in the fact that, and I'm not going to reiterate all the things she said because I ditto them. But the piece is, we need to really look at the transportation piece in regards to safety. There are, our roads leading to all the schools are not safe roads to get to. And the majority of them have very winding, very hilly and blind curves. And it's just terrifying for me to know that some of these children may get hurt, especially during the winter months when the sides of the roads are covered with snow and tall snowbanks, icy and whatnot. I did do all the driving around the town and did all the roads this last week on every single road that leads to the school. And the majority of them do have a sidewalk of some sort, even though they may not be exactly beautiful sidewalks, but up to about a mile-ish. With, and after that, the .5 rest of all the walkways are extremely dangerous. I mean, we're asking children on Mass Ave going westbound to walk up towards almost Workers' Credit Union. We're looking at kids at Lancaster walking on no sidewalks down past Rolling Acres, etc. My side of the Route 2A, which is from the center of the town going eastward, we have no sidewalks whatsoever and we have all those dangerous curves up and around. So I guess I'm really concerned that some, you know, I understand the need for policy. I work in another district. I know this is heart wrenching and terrible in order to make some of these decisions for our district financially and whatnot. But I think the safety of our children is utmost and I am terrified to let my kids walk to school and they are high schoolers. And, you know, I think we need to really look at where some of the roads are and where some of those cutoffs were. And I'd also like to know if ever the police department was consulted in this or the town highway department was consulted in terms of how they're going to keep these roads safe and clear, especially in the wintertime. So thank you for letting me voice my concerns and challenges.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And then, Dr. Burnham?
Next would be Meg and Bob Elliott.
Hi, yeah, so my name is Bob Elliott. I live at 1155 Massachusetts Avenue. I have a freshman in high school. And I've gone outside, measured, I have no sidewalk in front of the, the house. We're worried about snow and ice and the, and the same stuff that everybody's been voicing. The problem is, I've measured from where the line is to where he's supposed to walk is 17 inches. In the winter, we know that that's going to be greatly reduced. There's tree branches that are, that are hanging, you know, some of the spots, we don't even let him ride his bicycle, you know, from the house to the high school. I put it in the back of my truck and I drive it up there and then he can ride around after the school. Again, he's 14 years old, I understand, but there's not a safe place for him to, to leave the house and walk to school. I guess that's pretty much what I wanted to voice and thank you.
Thank you for your comment. That's three public comments. Oh, I'm sorry, sir. Did you want to say something else? Okay, with three public comments, that brings us almost to 10 minutes. Do I have a motion from a member of the committee to extend public comments? Okay, in a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. And could we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Beardmore?
Aye.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Mr. School and Briney?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
And Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes. Okay, so our next.
Our next comment would be from Frank McPartland.
Hello, my name is Frank McPartland. I live at 335 Highland Street. I guess I, I would like to, I guess, third, the, or fourth, the concerns about safety and access of the school with reflected the transportation policy. I also have some concerns about the inconsistent application of the policy. I've lived at this address for five years. For each of those years, we've had school, school busing, even through a time when, when we technically wouldn't qualify with one of our students. We live approximately, depending on the mapping, 1.0 1.6-ish miles away from, from, from the school on the Northfield end line. My, one of my main issues with the application of the policy was we received communication on the ninth stating that no transportation at all was available due to our low location beyond 1.5 miles away. There was no indication as to which student this was for, so we took it to be both. When the school bus, when the school bus route listing was issued on August 22, it indicated that one student would, would be picked up, but not the other. When it appeared that, depending on how you looked at the addresses, busing would go past our houses for both the elementary and middle school routes multiple times, depending on how, how the route worked. And it was, it was very just troubling to us about the, the inconsistent application of, of the, the policy.
Thank you. I appreciate that comment. Thank you. Is there another comment, please?
Yes, next would be Mary Braithwaite.
Hi, I just want to, I'm Mary Braithwaite, 204 Northfield Road. I literally live around the corner from Turkey Hill, which both my students, one will be third and one will be fifth, will be walking to. Northfield has zero sidewalks and zero shoulder. There's nowhere to walk. I tried walking my daughter during COVID and multiple times we had to jump in a ditch to avoid cars. Everyone flies down Northfield, we, to the point that we have a police detail in front of my house on a regular basis. So I'm a little concerned. I understand that there is budget constraints and stuff, but at the same point, Northfield is not a safe street. I don't even let my children walk across the street during rush hour or rush morning, I guess, for that reason. So I just, I'm very concerned because now we're going to have seven kids from our bus stop walking to school where there's zero spot to walk them if you're not in the street. So I just wanted to point that even though we're literally like probably .3 from the school, there's no safe spot to walk. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next comment, please.
And this individual joined the meeting after we began the public comments, so I'll just ask them to state their full name and their address. Bea Algerin?
Hi, sorry. So my name's Stephanie Algerin. I live on 1112 Massachusetts Avenue. And I'm also stating the same concerns that every parent has. I live right at the intersection of Whiting Street. My mailbox has been taken out. I have been hit with my, with another vehicle in my own driveway. There is no safe way for my children to go up the street on Mass Ave. It is also known as a Route 2A, so a state highway that you want kids that are between grades of 12, three to 12 to be able to walk on. So, and there's no sidewalks, there's no cross guards, there is nothing for the safety of our kids. And I also do want to point out also that the website does have considerations for the, the Dusty website does have considerations that there are, if it is a physical safety to a child, you should be able to give them transportation to school.
And if I may, hi, I'm Ben Algerin. Just heard from my wife, Stephanie. But this is an issue that we were able to voice concerns on more than once during the school committee meetings and it doesn't seem to have gotten any traction at all. And it's very, it's very disturbing for us in the fact that there is very little appearing to be happening. This is one area that would really help parents in the district who have transportation issues and it would assist us a lot. And it just seems that the budget has overruled that and there's a lot of safety issues, particularly with Mass Ave and the surrounding streets, and I feel like that's being ignored. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments?
There are no additional new speakers, but we have a repeat request.
Um, that's, that's fine. That's fine.
Jennifer D. Francisco?
Hi, my name is actually Heather Castro. I'm Jennifer's sister. I'm sitting next to her right now. I live on 168 Townsend Harbor Road. And just my concern is the same as everybody else's. Townsend Harbor is used as a cut through for every construction vehicle north of us because they don't want to be involved in the traffic on Route 13. So Townsend Harbor has massive construction vehicles from 6 o'clock in the morning until 4 o'clock, 5 o'clock in the afternoon. The end of Townsend Harbor going towards Mass Ave is very windy, very blind curves. And the sides of the road in the fall are poison ivy and very little room on the side of the road. There's one place that goes up a hill and curves around that I'm lucky to not have somebody coming head on at me at the top of the curve in a car. The other thing, just a very specific notice, when I looked at the bus schedules, which I thought was very odd, for Townsend Harbor Road, it goes 1 to 166 and then goes 176 to the higher 3, 400s. Literally skips the six houses around me, but yet provides bus service for Hemlock across the street and bus service for Woodlawn, which is the U that goes around my house. So that confuses me as to why those sets of houses were skipped as to, because it looks like there's bus service. So I don't understand why those numbers in specific were skipped. But my main concern, other than the funky bus schedule, is just the safety on that road, the safety on, on Mass Ave, no sidewalks, no crossing guards. That curve that goes from my sister's house on Mass Ave all the way up by Northfield had that car accident, the head-on collision so many years ago where that 30-some-year-old mother died. And I'm terrified of that spot. In the fall and the spring, there is, you cannot see anybody in the shadows there. You cannot. You, you just can't. The sun comes right down the road and everybody hugs the middle of the road so that they don't hit the side of the road. But it's terrifying. And the end of Northfield, if they cut up Northfield and around the elementary school, that end of Northfield right there barely fits two cars, let alone kids and two cars.
20 seconds?
And I'm fine, I'm done. Thank you so much for letting me comment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else that wishes to comment that we don't see? I'm not a technological person, but I'm not seeing anybody's.
I'm not seeing anyone.
Okay. All right then. So we are going to discuss this at length under old business, under transportation. So I, I would say though that it was, there are a couple of comments that I'm curious about and, and I will get back to those individuals because I'm a little confused myself. So I will get back to them. I, I'm not going to belabor that here. So next on the agenda is the Chair's report. And I'm going to, I'm, I'm sorry, it's a little lengthy. So I'm going to do the best I can to move right along. So first, I want to take this opportunity to thank all of those that have been working hard in anticipation of school opening. The administration, central office, the bus company, the teachers, the custodial staff, the secretaries, the cafeteria staff, and all of the staff members. I especially wish to thank our families who are filling the supply lists and getting their students ready for another school year. I do want to acknowledge the obstacles that we as, as a committee has placed before many families in the area of transportation. It was not our intention that a week before school starting, we would have families and school personnel scrambling for a solution to this transportation problem. This is a situation that we honestly felt had been communicated through last fall into December and reiterated in March, April. Communication is ineffective on our part when it doesn't reach its intended audience. Our communication obviously did not reach you and for that, I sincerely apologize. We can't go backward, we can only go forward. I believe this problem needs a three-pronged solution. First, something must be done in the short term with school starting next week. We need to do what is possible to help families get their students to school safely. This is the intended focus of the meeting tonight. Secondly, we need a long-term solution. So this situation does not occur again. Some solutions seem reasonable, but they're not available today, but could be at a later time. We'll continue to work on long-term solutions. Finally, we need a solution to the communication breakdown we've experienced regarding transportation. This type of breakdown where the school committee feels the message is sent, but it is in fact not received, cannot be repeated. And we need to figure out how to better communicate in the future. I'd like to thank those parents that contacted the school committee and that came to speak with us tonight about the issue, because that is the best way for your voice to be heard. That doesn't give you any answers, but I wanted you to understand from what direction I think we should go. What the committee does, of course, is up to the committee, but that, that's the direction that I'm thinking. So before we get on to the other things, we need to ask about the regular session meetings from the 15th of December. And has everyone read those? And do I have a motion on those minutes? Mrs. Kelly? Oh, can't hear you.
You think after this many years, I'd figure it out. I'll make a motion to approve the regular session meeting minutes from December 15th to 21.
And a second, please. Yes, Mr. Leighton?
I'll second that motion.
Are there any discussions on that? Okay, see, then?
I will abstain, having not been a member at that time.
Most certainly. Then we need to have a roll call vote.
Well, I'll start with Mr. Beardmore so he can officially register his abstain.
I officially abstain.
Mr. School and Briney?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes. All right, and then next is the superintendent's report.
So recently I did send out a welcome back letter to families. And I would like to reiterate from that message that we have several, several new administrators joining the district. Karma Tussigna, former guidance. Um, Karma Two Signot, former guidance counselor at the middle school, has been uh, named as the high school assistant principal. We brought on board this summer a new athletic director, Mr. Kevin Bigelow. And a director of facilities and grounds, Mr. Steve Pousaterry, and we will be um, trying to coordinate an opportunity for a meet and greet uh, for these new um, administrators. Uh, in my letter, I indicated that the uh, the leadership team had spent a a good amount of time this summer working on review of the strategy for continuous improvement. Uh, reworking action plans uh, in accordance with that strategy, as well as uh, digging into data. Each school had a week-long summit with the members of central office to look at data so that we could set goals for the upcoming year. There'll be more on that in a future meeting. Our equity audit got underway in August, and we're anticipating um, uh, forums to be held uh, soon, and a report to be provided in December. As soon as I have additional information from the group that is conducting the audit, I'll be pushing that information out um, to all of our families. Um, as you know, we're preparing to implement a new math curriculum and a new literacy curriculum in grades K through five. So the central office um, curriculum team has been doing an amazing amount of work this summer uh, to lift some of the burden off of the teachers as they begin to implement a brand-new curriculum. Uh, some folks may have noticed um, that we have streamlined our uh, district webpage. That's a result of the feedback that we got on our communication survey last spring. Um, we also advised families that um, school meals and breakfast and lunch this, this year again uh, will be at no cost. Um, although it's important to mention that milk is not amongst the free items for lunch and breakfast. Um, I will uh, I will mention that the extended day program for our before and after-school uh, programs for the upcoming school year. Um, Mrs. McCarthy Gillette has uh, been communicating out with families ru- routinely for the last couple of weeks. Uh, reminding folks that if their um, plans have changed and they no longer need the extended day program um, to please withdraw their children so that we have spaces available for those on our waitlist. Um, and anybody who would like to get on a waitlist, please do uh, complete a registration form uh, and get that into us. Relative to bus, the bus routes are uh, posted now on our website. Um, and they will be posted in Friday's um, issue of the ledger. We have had some inquiry as to um, our grass fields at the middle high school campus uh, being closed. Folks have noticed that the kids are back having practices and tryouts, uh, yet there's nobody on those grass fields. We did close those grass fields this summer, and we did have a landscape company come in to do some restoration work. The fields were in really rough shape, um, and we're trying to give um, the grass a little bit of an opportunity to take hold before we uh, put heavy foot traffic back on it. Uh, we will be assessing that situation uh, in the next week or so as to when we think we can open it, if we can open it. There's a possibility that we may try to find alternative uh, space for grass fields on the campus so that we can continue to leave one of those grass fields closed. If we cannot find enough space and accommodate all of the users um, for our fall season, which would be the LISA soccer, um, the youth soccer, and our Bengals organization for football, as well as all of our practices and um, games for our own athletic programs, then we will be using the field. Um, regardless, I think that we're planning to close the fields again after graduation in June to, to do some additional restoration work on those fields. And we'll say they are looking a lot better than they, they were looking at graduation time. Um, additionally, I would um, give you an update on our safety team. The safety team, including members of both the fire and the police department, met uh, the last week of July. Um, we discussed at that point uh, that we would like to have a demonstration on a program called Navigate Three Sixty, which has an emergency management suite of tools available for schools. Um, we did have that presentation earlier this week. The team also uh, feels strongly that it would be uh, best to have an outside consultant who is a professional in assessing school's safety risk uh, needs to come in and provide an assessment so that we can start planning for uh, projects that we can take on to improve the safety of the, the physical plant. Um, also on the, on the same topic of safety, our school resource officer is planning to attend all school open houses in the next couple of weeks. Uh, he can review our safety drills and uh, answer questions for parents. Um, if there is not a strong attendance at those open houses, uh, we may follow up with a, a Zoom forum for that same purpose, but we'll, we'll make that decision after uh, we see what the turnout is for open house. And lastly, staff returns on Monday. Uh, students, grades one through twelve, return on Tuesday. Friday, of course, is uh, no school day for an extended uh, Labor Day weekend. And our kindergarten and pre-K students start on Tuesday, Sep- September sixth. Uh, the first week of school, um, for everyone else, our kindergartners uh, will be undergoing kindergarten screening testing. Um, and information regarding all of that should be coming from the school if it hasn't already. Um, lastly, I would echo the comments of the chair. Um, a lot of thanks for all of the hard work this summer, particularly for our custodians and grounds crew. This was a hot summer, and, and they still uh, did a fabulous job preparing the schools uh, to receive faculty and students again. Uh, so, thank, thank you very much for, for all the hard work. And I will turn it back to you, Mrs. Arshambo.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions for the superintendent? All right, seeing none, then we'll continue on. Um, under new business, we have an action item and um, it involves a request for ARPA funds to be used for sidewalks. And it's something that I've talked about off and on since I heard about ARPA funds. Um, I, I've asked sidewalks, is that eligible? And at first they weren't, but now, secondly, they are. So I called or contacted um, the town manager and asked her what was the best way that we as a committee and parents could um, let the select board know uh, that we would like these funds to be used in that manner. So first off, for anyone who is unaware, I wrote a cheat sheet of ARPA funds here. So ARPA funds and municipal funds, and they come, and, and if I knew the acronym, American Recovery something. Um, and they came from the federal government, and it was in response to COVID. They have to be spent by December of twenty twenty-six. But they have to be obligated by December of twenty twenty-four. The select board has control over how that money is spent. That's the way the law is written. So um, they have said that they're looking for a departmental and citizen input. So my purpose for putting this on the agenda tonight was twofold. One was, I wanted to uh, discuss with the school committee if they would like to submit a letter to the select board and ask them to consider the use, particularly for these areas in town where kids are walking with no sidewalks. Now, once again, as I said at the beginning, well, this is a multi-pronged approach here. This is long-term. The sidewalks are not going to show up in the next two weeks. So this is a long-term deal, but we have to work the long-term along with working the short-term. So um, I, I believe that is something that this school committee um, should be able to advocate for, to the select board, but I'm throwing it out to the school committee for their thoughts.
Hey Carol, this is Tony.
Okay, Tony?
I, I think that one thing that the sidewalks offer is a permanent addition to the town. In a way that a lot of funding, a lot of the ARPA funding is being used as sort of like quick fixes or things that will be here for a while, but then go away. But if, if we can get the funds allocated to the ta- from the town to the sidewalks, it will be, you know, a long-lasting change that doesn't really, you know, may not fix our books in the short term. But it will help with the busing problem, but it'll also just make the town nicer. And so I think that that is an excellent way to use that money, and I think it would, like you said, it would be part of a multi-pronged approach to deal with the transportation issue. So instead of using it for like, you know, this one project that we need to be done in a year, like, you know, fixing the the site where the old school building is getting torn down, this will be permanent positive, and it will help address a lot of the safety, the very reasonable safety concerns that parents expressed tonight. So I, I, I think we should do that. I would, I would, I would definitely be in support of that.
Okay, um, Mr. Latman?
Thank you. I would agree with Anthony. Um, I also think it's, it's going to help the whole community. It's going to help not only the children, but also the adults who are going to walk these and, and run on these uh, sidewalks. I also think we should, we should write a letter, we should send to the select board, but I also want to say we should also advertise it. Um, post the letter on Facebook, also have, send it out in their um, newsletters and encourage um, parents to, to also write letters as well.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Beardmore?
I'd like to add a little bit of context to this. I, I think I may take a slightly more conservative view of this. Um, and, and this is, of course, informed by my time on the finance committee, and, and also, you know, frankly, attending the select board meeting last Tuesday, um, eight days ago, which Mr. Latman also attended um, as a member of the capital planning committee. Um, there are no shortage of projects that we could invest in, in a town alone in Burg, using these funds. Um, the, 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 the different thing about ARPA funding as opposed to, let's say, uh, an excludable debt project that you have to go to town meeting and get a vote for, and then go to um, the ballot and get approved as a, as an advance over your tax levy limit. Um, is that this is a executive action that can be taken on behalf of, by the Board of Selectment, and then that's basically it. That, that's the action. Um, and so it's, it's potentially a little bit more immediate um, and can jump past some of the politics that might get in the way of something like a project at Thirty School Street or a project at, at Marshall Park or, or what happened. Um, but there, you know, I, first of all, I want to caution everybody, like, there's a long list of things that we need to spend a substantial amount of money on as a town to include repurposing Town Hall, repurposing Ritter, building executive uh, office space, building a new elementary school, or re- or, or reconditioning Turkey Hill. Um, I'm forgetting stuff. Uh, Marshall, did I mention Marshall Park? I don't know, but I mean, it's a, it's a long list, and it, it, I can tell you, it exceeds our borrowing capacity if we were to go out and borrow all that money. And, and notice in that, let me, I didn't mention sidewalks, because it hasn't been something that has been considered as a long-term capital need. Um, the other, the other piece of context here is that we have had great success over the course of the last three or four years in getting state money for this um, for these uh, safe streets, improving streets programs from the state. So all the work that happened in the center of town over the course of the last year and a half or so, uh, there's work that was done in the Whalen District. Um, that was all state-funded, that was done by going out and getting grants. Um, and, and, and so that will very likely continue in a variety of spaces around town. Um, and so, you know, hopefully over time, the condition of our, of the walkability of our roads will, will improve. Um, three million dollars, I, I think it's very unlikely that we're going to go, go put three and a half million dollars of ARPA funding into sidewalks. Um, I think that there'll be a chunk that'll go to Marshall Park, there'll be a chunk that may go to someplace else, and, and hopefully um, there'll be a chunk that can go to sidewalks, um, which to Mr. Latman's point will improve um, the overall uh, value of our town and walkability of our town. But it isn't a panacea that solves this problem, number one. And number two, wherever you put the sidewalks, the, the benefit is really kind of limited to the people in the area of those sidewalks, right? So for example, I live on Pleasant Street. I'm going to benefit when my kid walks around the center of town to go to the bodega to get a, a, you know, a soda and a candy bar. But my street isn't going to be any more walkable because of sidewalks in the center of town. So I think we need to balance the benefits, you know, to the entire town of this, you know, what is effectively windfall money. So I would be supportive of support for um, for sidewalks um, using ARPA funds, but I think it needs to be worded in a way that at least pays some credit to this is part of a, a, of a broader spectrum of improvements um, that, that can potentially benefit the town. And, and a chunk of money to sidewalks, I think, makes sense. Um, because it, it can make an iterative improvement um, to the issues that were, were brought up during public comment today.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Beardmore. Is there any other comments from the committee on that? My only other comment is, I know there was some discussion, I don't know where I heard it, so, so who knows? But um, that because Mass Ave is a state road, that our ARPA funds would not affect Mass Ave. Now, I could be right or wrong, uh, I don't know, but that's another thing. So I believe that a letter should also go to um, our state legislators, so that when they see money, because I know the state has gotten money for such things. So when they see money, they will know that this is a need in this community and see if they can pull that money there. I'm very concerned about no sidewalks east of the school property at all. That, that is troublesome to me. Um, obviously, all the, all the safety concerns are an issue, there's no question. Um, so, so my, my thought would be, I would like to, the school committee to authorize the writing of a letter. I can write it, I don't know, it doesn't matter, but the writing of a letter to the select board regarding ARPA funds, or as, as we talked about the um, air conditioning earlier last spring. Any way you want to fund it is fine with me, but if we can find some funds to put some sidewalks in, that's a step in the right direction. So um, if, if, if that, the spirit of that letter um, would be all right with the committee, I'd be happy to write it, bring it back here, because we're meeting again next week. And um, then it would be timely, and it would go to the select board as they're discussing these funds. So, any discussion on that, or thoughts?
Right, can I make a motion, Carol?
You certainly can.
I, I would move to uh, approve Carol's request for permission to write a letter regarding sidewalks, ARPA funds, and the select board.
Um, Mr. Latman?
I'll second that motion.
Can, can I just sneak in that I can also write to the slate, state legislators?
Sounds great. Yeah.
Okay, if that's all right with the two of you, then we will do that, and then I'll have those letters ready if we can take a vote on that. Dr. Barnum?
Mm-hmm. Mrs. Kelly? Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
Mr. Latman?
Yes.
Mr. Schoolenbrini?
Yes.
Mrs. Arshambo?
Yes. All right, thank you very much. So now we're to transportation, and um, that is And um that is the purpose of this meeting, this is not a regularly scheduled meeting. We um put this in because we knew this was needed to be done, so um. Once again, there are things we can do short term. There are things we can do long term. Um, Dr. Burnham, I believe you've been digging in data. So you have.
We have.
Questions for us.
All righty. So we put together some information. Um, just for everyone's benefit. Um, to kind of walk us through the progression of uh events that occurred that got us to this place. So. A little bit of background. It is true that the current policy has been in place since two thousand and five. Some of the folks who spoke during public comments said that it had not been consistently enforced. Um, in the early years when I first arrived, uh, about a year and a half before COVID turned the world around. Uh, we were becoming aware uh that decisions. Were being made by the bus company. And not by us in terms of putting students on a bus. We have since addressed that concern with the bus company. We have a meeting annually with the bus drivers, tomorrow is our meeting with the bus drivers. And we reiterate that every year that we have policy that. It's it's not up to the drivers or the folks at the office. Uh, to make decisions around uh placing children on buses. That all of that has to come through our office so that we make sure that we're consistent uh with implementation of policy. Some folks had asked me in uh email communications, uh, what's different? We made exceptions to the bus policy for the last two years. Um, because we knew that families were under a significant amount of strain and stress. Uh, due to all of the COVID uh protocols. Um, so we did our very best and you had all asked for us to do our best to accommodate. The requests that we receive. Um, so for the last two years, we have done our very best to accommodate all folks who have asked to have kiddos on the bus. The situation is not sustainable long term. Um, this requires an awful lot of um time spent. By staff in central office as well as the staff at D bus. Um, so I think that we need to work toward a more sustainable long term solution. And we can talk more about that shortly. So over several meetings, the school committee reviewed transportation data. Back in the fall of twenty twenty one, and this was put on the agenda at that time because the administration. Needed some information. We needed to know if the committee desired to make a change to the transportation policy. One, because our contract with our transportation vendor was coming to a close and we needed to go out to bid. For the next three year contract, so we needed to know what we were bidding for, what what were we asking? Um. The the company to be able to do for us. And we also needed to factor in any increased transportation costs. As we were developing the budget for the current fiscal year. Transportation was on the school committee agenda. September first, fifteenth, October sixth, and twentieth, November second, and seventeenth, December first, and the fifteenth. This year, we started sending out every school committee agenda when it was posted, we send it out to families. And we also have been posting all of our agendas with the supporting. Uh, documents or accompanying documents for school committee meeting. On our district website under the school committee page. We also conducted a survey of families relative to transportation. Uh, that survey was pushed out November eighteenth and the survey closed November twenty eighth. Seventy seven of one hundred and forty two families completed the survey. And the survey results were presented to the school committee December first. On December fifteenth, the committee voted not to change the transportation policy. So after that policy decision. On March twenty first, we sent out an email and asked all families to come, all families to complete. The transportation form. And we, as an administration, gather multiple data points from that one form. Because we ask the the parents to indicate if folks are planning to take a bus, if they're walking, if there are car drop off, etc. This is all useful information for our secretaries and administrators to have. Um, in addition. Um, it's important information for us to get to the bus company as quickly as possible. Um, if we want to have a smooth opening for school and transportation. Um, we did include the policy language uh from the transportation policy on that form. That form was also posted on our website under our transportation page. And parents were given until April fifteenth. To complete the form. Again, it was a form that all parents were asked to complete, whether they needed the bus or not. Uh, again, after the policy decision, we. We took um. Data from the form and shared that data with D bus on May ninth. Our intention in so doing, and we had communicated with D bus ahead of time. Was that if we got them the list of riders early. Our hope was that they could make the bus routes because we were adding a bus. Last year we had ten, we were adding an eleventh bus. We needed them to reconfigure the routes to more evenly distribute the riders across those buses. Historically, we've had buses that are very heavy. Typically routes three, four, and five. Um, and we know that this has been a chronic problem and a challenge for us. We asked the bus company to reconfigure the route, so we gave them this information. So that they could start re-mapping routes. And our hope was that by early July, we would have all of that done and we would be able to communicate out to families. Their bus route. So Dee did use that that roster um to develop the bus routes that are in place right now. Some additional data. Since that April fifteenth deadline, we have received two hundred and eighty six transportation forms. We have also registered one hundred and forty three new students this summer since the last day of school. Last year during the school year, we registered three hundred and four new students. Many of those, um, you know, were were students that were homeschooled during that first COVID year and they were returning. Uh, to Lunenburg Public Schools. The new student registrations thus far this year break out this way. Eighty nine at the primary school, fifteen at Turkey Hill, thirty nine at the middle high school. The new student registrations last school year. One hundred and eighty seven at the primary, thirty seven at Turkey Hill, and eighty at the middle school. When we take a look uh based on our student enrollment as of last Thursday. And we look to see how many students fall within that. Distance of a mile and a half, not eligible for the bus. This is the way it breaks down. We provide you numbers here for those kiddos that fall completely within that one point five mile. We give you a breakdown of the students that would be within one mile. And we also give you the the number of students that fall within a half mile by school. Question was also asked, so we provided this information as well. Um, there are fifteen ineligible students based on ours. Based on our school rosters that live on Mass Ave. Three are students at Turkey Hill, five at the middle school, seven at the high school. We have been fielding questions um from parents. One of them was, you know, what changed? As I explained previous, we have explained that we made exceptions during the COVID years to reduce. Uh, strain on our families. They have also expressed some confusion about who determines the bus routes. The bus routes are determined by D bus, not by the school department. There's just general confusion about the bus routes. Um, and uh in conversation uh with Liz, and she can chime in here shortly, um. It's difficult to explain to families how to read the bus route that's been put. Out to to us by the 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 bus company. Um, simply by an email explanation. So what we're what we're planning to do is tomorrow morning, um, we'll do a pre-recorded Zoom where Liz can voice over. And share screen and share a copy of the bus route so she can explain how to read the information. Um, on that bus route. I think that that will be helpful, not just for this year, but for every year moving forward. So that parents know how to interpret the information that's provided in that document. Other feedback that we've gotten from parents and guardians. Uh, is the frustration over the wavering and last minute changes, they don't find that to be helpful. Um, some of it expressed a frustration that we just need to make a decision and stick with it. Um, and I I can fully appreciate the frustration. So with all of that, my team. Over the last week. We've been looking at. Some possible solutions. Um, and as Mrs. Arshambo indicated earlier, we're thinking about. Short term solutions, what can we do immediately to remedy the situation as best we can? As well as long term solutions around this. One of the questions that comes all the time is just add more buses, bus all the kids and add more buses. Even if it weren't a budgetary issue. There just are not additional buses. We have contacted Dee and we have asked them. About the possibility of additional buses if it were decided by this committee that there was going to be a change to policy. And we were gonna bus more kiddos. Just like everywhere else, they are also struggling to find drivers. Last year. They had such trouble finding drivers and substitute drivers. That both owners of D bus, along with their uh office manager. Drove bus routes much of last year themselves. So this is not a viable solution right now. If we wanted to make a change to policy and we were gonna need additional buses and if that decision is made. Relatively soon, sometime early fall, we could communicate that to D bus so that they could start preparing. Um. To deliver on on policy change. It was suggested that we could just relocate extended day back to the schools and then those kiddos aren't on a bus. It would free up bus seats, and yes, it would. But those freed up bus seats are not necessarily distributed across all eleven buses. We don't have eleven buses. Coming up to pick kids up in the morning to take them to Turkey Hill and the primary school. We don't have eleven buses coming here to to TCP in the afternoon to drop off kiddos. From Turkey Hill in the primary, so. The freed up space is not necessarily going to be on the bus routes that we may need that space. Um. When we consider relocating back to the cafeteria at the um the Turkey Hill and the primary. Again, we don't currently have staff to support two locations. And because of the limited staff, we would have to be having a conversation around reducing the enrollment. Which would then, we would be notifying families at the final hour. That in fact, we we won't be able to provide extended day for for your children. Um, I think that that idea as a solution for right now. Um, takes a problem for one group of parents and and potentially resolves it. But now creates a a new problem for a different group of parents. So we don't feel that this is viable for a short term solution. We discussed um. Creating a before school tutoring opportunity for kiddos at Turkey Hill, Middle School, and High School. That way, parents, if they have to leave the house early because they have to get to work, they could drop. Students at the school and they would be in a supervised program. It would be great for the kids who are struggling and need some extra help. Um, or just time to have a quiet space to get homework done for our kiddos down at the Turkey Hill. Um, we are working with the iReady learning platform, and that's a sort of just right. Um. Uh, platform for kiddos that when they log on, they are working right at the grade level. That they need to be working on based on the skills that they've mastered. Um, we also have some data that seems to suggest that the recommendation that comes from iReady. That kiddos spend forty five minutes a week on the My Learning platform in math. In literacy actually can make a difference i- in terms of closing learning gaps for them. So we thought that this would be a good opportunity, students could be dropped off at Turkey Hill in the morning. There would be a staff member there that could issue them a Chromebook, they could log on and work in their My Path. Um. Which would be a great, great thing. However, we posted those positions, we have no applicants. If I can't staff this program, I can't offer this program, so at the moment. This is not a viable option for a solution next week or the week after. Is it possible that over the first several weeks of school? We might be able to try to recruit staff uh for a program like this? Yes, but I will be honest, we had a really challenging time last year. Staffing our after school tutoring program. And oftentimes, um. Central office administrators were covering absences of those after school tutors. To provide that support for the kids. So we don't think that this is viable right now. So where do we land with this? Um, we would put forward for your consideration the short term recommendation. That we work as we did last year and the year before to accommodate. The requests that come in for the bus. I I have to be honest. With only a handful of days left, I cannot, I I cannot get one hundred percent of those kiddos placed on a bus by Tuesday morning. It was the same situation last year. We need to figure out how many open seats we have, and that fluctuates. Over the first month or so. Over the first month or so of school. Because initially, sometimes parents drive their, their kids to school for the first week or two, especially with the younger ones. So they might have registered for the bus, but they aren't riding the bus, but can we drop them from the bus yet? So it, it takes a little bit of time to, to have that all kind of settle out and know. How many riders do we actually have on a daily basis on these buses and how much space do I have? So folks would have to be a little bit patient with us. We would work as quickly as we can. But, but I can tell you right now in conversations with the bus company. I, I cannot guarantee that we will have everybody on a bus by Tuesday morning. In terms of long-term. Again, I, I don't think that this accommodating request as they come in is sustainable in its current. Form. D bus honestly in the office are understaffed. And if we were going to continue. To operate in this way, again, I, I have to advocate for a transportation coordinator position. Because every time. We have a new form come in, the two hundred and eighty-six that we've gotten since April fifteenth. And every time a new student registers. Many of those need to be placed on a bus, maybe not a hundred percent of them. But many of them need to be placed on a bus. This goes on throughout the entire school year. We get phone calls from parents that. Situations have changed at home. They didn't need the bus before, but they need the bus now. So this is not something that, well, if we had just done a better job and jumped on this early enough. This could have all been settled by now. That, that is not actually. The truth of the, the matter. We deal with this on a daily basis all year long. Can we continue to operate this way? On our end, if we can make the commitment to an additional staff. Possibly, but I have no control over what Dee decides to do with their staffing in their office. So whether or not Dee can manage in a timely manner to accommodate the requests that we're getting daily. I, I, I just don't know that that's the most viable long-term. Solution, not to change the policy. So then it becomes, okay, if we're gonna consider changing the policy, what is the change that you want to make? What's the change that would make you comfortable? You know, is it? Where, we're busing everybody. Beyond a mile, beyond a half mile. I don't think that that necessarily addresses the concerns that you've heard here tonight. Because if there are no sidewalks within a half mile, you're still walking on a dangerous road. So short of a sidewalk project, right now, that doesn't seem to be an optimal choice. To remedy the salute, to find a solution for the, the concerns that were brought before you tonight. So then you can take a look at. Do we, we currently bus all students up through grade two? And anybody who has recently had children at the primary school, you know that there is still an awful lot of car drop-offs. Even though the bus is available, they're all eligible. Do we make busing available to all students up through grade five? Do we make busing available to all kids through middle school with grade eight? Do you want to revisit busing all students? Whatever decision we make. We are absolutely going to have to communicate this through every means possible, more than once. We, we thought that we had been transparent. We were sharing information. You know, we're, we're a bit stymied. The communication survey that we did in the, in the spring, we had a lot of good feedback about. Information was readily available. If, if there are parents who have suggestions on how we can better reach them. I would love to hear from them. I honestly would love to hear from them. One of the things that we are going to begin doing. At some point this year, sooner rather than later. The, the platform that we use to push out emails to everyone in the district or to push out those robo-calls. To everyone in the district also has a text feature. So that we could also now start sending text messages right to people's phones. So maybe that will make a difference. We're gonna keep trying. Any suggestions people have, we're, we're open to hearing them and, um, open to give. To give that a try for sure, because as much as parents are frustrated. With, you know, we didn't know anything, it, everything's last minute. It's also. The last minute on our end too, trying, trying to find resolutions. For, for all of the parents. So it's in our interest as well to find. More, more vehicles for communication. And one thing is not going to work for all parents. I think we're gonna continue to have to. Use multiple modes of communication. As we continue to. Work to improve the communication. So. I, I threw a lot of information at you, a lot of numbers. I don't know if there's a slide that you, anyone would want me to go back to. And leave up for you to kind of absorb a, a little bit, Mr. Beamer?
You, um, I, I have a number of comments that I want to make, but just in terms of clarifying information before that. Could you go into some? Additional color in terms of what the accommodating requests might actually look like? So for example, what comes to mind for me is. Available seating on busing is something that's gonna be, have a certain amount of elasticity or fluidity to it. Over the month of September. And, you know. It doesn't seem like it's gonna be a hard policy, right? Like we'll be able to accommodate all requests or we'll be able to accommodate some requests or within a different. Radius or whatever. So could you potentially offer some color in terms of how you think that might actually come about?
So the challenge for us is. Part of the data that I, that I showed you is we have. We have a, a fair number of new registrations throughout the course of our school year. So I can't even say that all kids who are coming to Lunenburg this year are already registered. We will continue to have those registrations. The challenge for us is we can fill the seats that we have available now with kids who are currently not eligible under the policy. But if new kiddos move into town. And I don't have space on the bus for them. And they live two or more miles from the school and they are in grades K through six. We are legally obligated to provide them transportation. So. It is elastic, things do change. Um, there's a lot of change that happens particularly on the. The secondary bus run, so that's the middle high school bus run that happens before the. Second bus run, which is Turkey Hill in the primary. Because kiddos are involved in after-school athletic programs and that's seasonal. And somebody might play the fall sports, but need to be on the bus. You know, after the fall season is over, or some kiddos might, you know, play a winter sport. They need. To be on the bus the fall and the, the spring. So there is a lot of. Flexing of numbers at, on that bus run. Not, not as much. At the, the lower grades, we do have students that withdraw. They move out of town. They withdraw from school. So we do have seats that do open up over the course of the year. But I think the one. Who can best speak to some of these challenges. Is Liz, because Liz is the one that is the contact for D bus. She's the one that coordinates daily. With Linda Hargraves, the manager of the office at D bus. So Liz, is there anything that you would like to, to add to that?
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Burnham, and thank you to the committee for having me tonight. I can answer any questions that you may have because as Dr. Burnham said, I do this daily. And Linda Hargraves and I have a very good relationship back and forth. So my feeling is that sometimes she'll accommodate more for me than she would for someone else. But we go back and forth daily depending on what type of emails I receive from parents. What kind of changes there may be. And some of those changes may be people have moved within town, say. So I need to get that to Linda so she knows the new address and we need to change the bus numbers. It could be job changes. Someone had first shift, now they have third shift and I need to. Shift those hours. Now maybe they need PM transportation instead of AM transportation. There's also cases of daycare where a child may now be going to a grandmother's house. Instead of going to their own house because the family situation has changed. Sometimes there's medical concerns and so we have to accommodate those. So. As I'm talking through this, those are some of the types of changes that I see on a daily basis. There, there are more, but I try to accommodate each and every request that we possibly can.
I just have one and thank you, Liz, I, and Dr. Burnham. It sounds like you can't give a direct answer to that question and I, I sympathize with the situation. I think that. Part of the challenge that, that I would like to see us be able to manage though is. In that we're already in a disruptive situation. I don't want to create a situation that's more disruptive, right? Whereby you give a kid transportation, then you gotta take it away because of whatever reason affected by what Liz just outlined. But I'll, I'll leave that alone for a moment. The other question that I had relative to. Our ability to administer and manage this, uh, Dr. Burnham, you had mentioned like hiring a transportation coordinator. And you and I discussed, you know, in person today, some of the challenges that we have just around the logistics of. Not only this issue, but a bunch of others. But it occurred to me while you were talking that. These changes in, in enrollment. Are really unprecedented numbers over one or two-year period. We, we've never seen these kinds of fluctuations in Lunenburg before. And obviously that's a result of COVID. Esser money, for example, and, and other federal money, ARPA money. For example, that we talked about a little bit earlier, um, is really intended to, to absorb some of that impact. And, and I'm wondering, do we potentially have Esser capacity? You know, for the current year to create maybe a one-year position? That we could actually do that without having a, a major budget implication? To, to at least give us the ability to be as responsive and proactive in managing this over the course of the next several months?
I'll invite Mr. Cassidy to jump in on this. He's the one that's managing. All of the Esser, the Esser grants for the district. Mr. Cassidy?
No, thank you, Dr. Burnham, uh, through you to the committee. I, I, I can certainly run those numbers. There, there was a, a little bit of surplus. Due to some late hires last year. Uh, we can certainly take a look at. I don't want to call it surplus funds, but you know. Any money that needs to be. Reallocated for any Esser eligible project, we can certainly, I can take a look at that. I can report out to the committee. For the next school committee meeting, uh, if you would wish, but. You know, that, that is certainly viable. I would have to survey. Uh, other districts on comparable salaries. On what, what, uh, a, a transportation coordinator would get and kind of match it up with any. Possible adjustments to the submitted Esser budget. So I'll leave that up to the committee to direct me to, uh, report out on that.
I, I just, and it's just a suggestion and maybe it's committee action or I, I just. It, it sounds like the request here. Is to give the administration the authority to deal with some of these things on a as-per basis or based on need. Or I'm not exactly sure what criteria you're leaning into, but to try to help absorb the impact on the parents, which from a short-term perspective, I think. We absolutely need to do. I would certainly take a much more conservative approach, by the way, on the policy. I don't agree with some of the things that were said today. About the policy and I, I think we need to be a little bit more holistic and thoughtful about the policy. But in terms of the short-term impact, I think we've actually, we've got to figure out how to absorb that. But I don't want that to also create an undue impact on your office or Liz. So, you know, I, I, I want to make sure that if we're setting expectation. That we're gonna be able to work with people and figure this out. It might, it's definitely not going to be perfect. But that we have the, we actually have the administrative capacity to do that. And it might just mean hiring an assistant for Liz, if, if that's what it takes.
Or cloning her.
Or cloning her, yes. Maybe more cost-effective.
Not eligible though.
Thank you.
Mr. Schoolenbrini, you had a question?
This is really more of a comment. One of the things that struck me as unusual when we were having this conversation. Last year is that you and Mr. Cassidy brought up that. The bus companies have sort of territorialized the state of Massachusetts. So that it is not the case that there is a readily available competitor. So that if we didn't go with the bus company, there's not a, a substitute. And I think that for parents that are listening, uh, you know. I think that that's something that we all need to bear in mind that like. We don't have much of a choice. It's, it's D bus. And we have to take the bus along with all of their limitations. Because there isn't any real competition. And I just want to make sure that my memory was correct. Cause I think that that better contextualizes the nature of the problem on a systemic level.
That's right. Mr. Cassidy can jump in here, but. For the last two, uh, transportation bids, I believe D bus was the only. Company to bid. And if we needed additional buses and they can't deliver. We would then have to bid out for someone else to give us another bus. Another two buses, depending on what, what the committee decides to do with policy. And I don't know. How we're going to secure a contract for one bus. With, with a vendor who doesn't even bid on the entire contract with us. Mr. Cassidy, anything to add on that?
Oh, yeah, I'll stand by what I said, you know, it's, uh. Maybe, uh, maybe I didn't use the word territorial, but certainly they. Bus companies are, are kind of locked in, in different areas of the state. And they service the, uh, th- those areas. So there, there's not. It's not a growing. Business. Uh, in, in the Commonwealth. So it, it's unless someone goes under or sells their company. You, you're not gonna, you're not gonna see any new competition or new bus companies delivering, uh, students. Uh, in Lunenburg anytime soon. So, um. Yeah, it, so it would be a challenge, an additional bus. yeah, it, so it would be a challenge, an additional bus, uh, if if at some point, I think you know, the superintendent and I were uh, we worked with the committee last year, you know, if we were talking extra school buses, we 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 have to let our vendor know to to make sure that they could get some additional um, buses. And if they can't accommodate that, then we we would have to find another vendor, whether it's a um, um, some other form of transportation. I'm not talking about Ubers uh, for students, but
Although we might have to.
Yeah, but and and I'm, this isn't, I'm not trying to scare the committee, but you know, we'd have to start really getting creative, whether it was, you know, in our limousine service or some other, uh, there are companies that provide some sorts of a service. Um, maybe not to students, but um, we we would have to really get creative. That shouldn't scare the committee off from making a decision on expanding the ridership in the district. That that'll be up for the administration uh, to work out for you. Okay?
Thank you. Mr. Layton?
Thank you. Uh, I want to thank uh, Mr. Beardmore and Mr. Scullumbrini, as well as Mr. Cassidy uh, for the information. I think that was uh, I agree with uh, all of that as well. I did have some other additional comments. I think again, it does come down to there is not enough buses. I think long term, um, I think we should be expressing our concern to D bus and our need for more buses. Um, I know it's a, it's a growing community. We've talked about this at other other school committee meetings that where there are developments being planned to be built in town. It's Lunenburg is projected to increase our population, so we are going to need uh, more buses in the future. Um, I agree for the, I I agree with the short-term plan and I believe that we should have a a transportation coordinator, a stipend for that, whether it's Esser funds or within our budget. Uh, find the funds that we can take care of, whoever is going to be doing the the work for this. I think also, obviously, long-term plan, we keep talking about sidewalks, we keep um, talking to the the select board, also talking with the police, making sure there's a a bigger police presence too, especially in the mornings. Uh, we should be looking into crossing guard stipends as well. Um.
So just as a point of information on that crossing guard, you recall that you um, gave permission to post a crossing guard position last year um, to be out here in front uh, of of the entrance here on Mass Ave uh, to the middle high school. We posted, we reposted, we had no applicants. We reached out to staff to see if they would be willing if if let's say a staffer at uh, Turkey Hill, the school doesn't start as early as the middle high school, somebody might be able to come, serve as a crossing guard in the morning for an hour and then uh, head down. Staffing has been a challenge all the way around, um, at every turn, whether it be extended day, these you know, um, added positions to assist. Um, you know, we'll have an update for you um, next week, but um, you recall that uh, Mrs. McGuire uh, came and made a recommendation that we hire a resource nurse um, to assist because we, we had data to uh, support the the added need. No applicants qualified. So now we go to Plan B, right? And are we looking to restore some LPN positions for that added support? So we'll, we'll be back uh, next week and we we can talk more about that at that point, but the staffing has been a challenge in many, many, many ways. It's not that we can't be creative and come up with solutions, but if I can't, if I can't find the the people to staff our programs to solve problems, um, it it just leaves us a little stuck.
Thank you. Uh, and I think this, I'm going to get kind of the same response to with the next one of like hiring someone for like an early drop-off where people can get dropped off in the CAF to reduce the bus sizes because parents could drop off their kid and say whatever, seven, seven thirty.
And that, that was going to be the tutoring, the before-school tutoring. Um, and again, no, no applicants.
So my thought on that, is it possible to repost also with like a higher stipend to try to encourage people? Because I I talk to coaches too and coaches don't want to coach sometimes and they can't get assistance because the stipends aren't high enough and people just don't want to do the work.
Mr. Cassidy, thoughts on a higher stipend hourly rate?
If you're referring to the the before now, uh, the before uh, school.
I think anything, honestly, can I just jump in? Just any position that doesn't get filled, is it possible to repost to try to get more applicants with a higher stipend?
Um, yeah, I I think it would need uh, be approved by the school committee. So we'd have to look at that on a, on a case-by-case basis. I think um, we can do that, but it would, it would need, it would be out of the norm and it would, I'd have to um, I mean, hopefully uh, adjust it to the correct uh, uh, rate to recruit the the right um, um, uh, quality candidates. But yeah, you would have to uh, you would have to approve those, the those rate adjustments.
And just for another point of information, um, Sue Doherty up at Eagle House um, often reaches out uh, for possible jobs that seniors could could work for their um, their tax reduction. Um, we've put out the positions like the crossing guard or somebody to greet people in the morning for um, extended day and check people in or check people out, um, any number of of things and um, none of our seniors want to do those jobs either. Unfortunately, yeah, we have reached out to uh, Fitchburg State to post uh, job opportunities for college students to fill extended day being one example. And again, we, we just, we're getting no takers. We're trying. We're really trying. Um, I don't know. I don't know what type of salary jump would make a difference or not. It, Mrs. Gillette can um, jump in here. Um, the challenge for her program is the split day. You want to speak to that, Patty?
No, it's, it's difficult because we need people in the morning from seven to nine, so you know, it's a difficult time of day. We're able to usually um, have enough employees for the morning because we don't have as many children. In the afternoon, though, it's a three-thirty to five-thirty split, so any mom who has her children at home can't come. Um, anyone who's who's working another job, it's an odd time of day. It's not even necessarily just the money. I think in the past, we've had um, more luck getting teenagers from the high school to come over. You know, we can take someone sixteen and above. That's not the case anymore and it's not necessarily just the money. It's they're all in sports or they're all on student government, the play. There's always other commitments that take precedent over working a two-hour shift. Um, we, we do our best, as as the superintendent said, we've contacted Fitchburg State numerous times. We've contacted the senior center. We're calling friends that we know, we're making, trying to make personal connections. Um, but we also need to make sure that these children are safe. So I can't just take people off the street. I can't have a warm body taking care of our children. We need to make sure that people um, are the right people to take care of them. So it's, it's, we've tried everything. We, we honestly have.
Thank you. And then there was just one more, uh, I guess brainstorming idea, I had more long-term goal, but um, with the bus being the only contract we typically see and the limitations in busing and expanding our community that we maybe explore uh, Lunenburg bus and maybe it's a capital plan of getting Lunenburg buses. But again, it opens a can of worms where we're hiring all the bus drivers as well. So concerning there as well.
Thank you, Mr. Layton. Um, Mrs. Kelly?
Thank you. This is Ashenbo. I cannot for the life of me figure out how to do that raise hand symbol, so. Um, I just wanted to say, we did hear all the families, all the emails and everything that came through. Um, and we certainly sympathize with the difficulties that this was putting on the families. I understand completely what it's like for parents, you know, you've got both working parents and you're struggling either have to change shifts or you're struggling to find a sitter or you're left wondering about the safety of your child because you let them walk to school. We heard everyone, we certainly sympathize and I think it's important to remember that we do serve every child in Lunenburg and it is our responsibility to make sure these kids are getting to school safe. Um, so I really do think at this time, we do need to try and accommodate all the students, um, with the understanding we really do have to look um, going forward because this town is growing significantly and this is going to be a problem that we're having year after year. Um, so we really need to sit back and brainstorm, but for right now, I think the best way to serve all the kids in the district is, is to try and accommodate these, all these forms that are coming through. Um, one thing I just wanted to to throw out to parents, um, if you're not going to use the bus, just consider that. If you're not going to use it as a consistent basis, consider that and allow that seat to be opened up to a family who desperately needs it. Um, I know that it's hard because you don't know what's going on throughout the year, but even if you decide in October, November, my kid hates the bus, he doesn't want to ride it. Let Liz know because it really does open up some more seats and it would really be valuable to another family. So, wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you, Laura. Um, Mr. Beardmore, I'll call on you before I put my two cents in. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um. So just my two cents, um, and for those of you who are not aware of all the school committee and administration know, um, I'm a new member of the school committee. This is my second meeting. It's the first one that's televised and um, it's been baptism by fire a little bit on, on this one. Um, and I've, I've gotten to kind of watch from the cheaper seats uh, over the course of the last few years and and I appreciate the, the pressure now, uh, certainly that, that school committee members are on in a situation that, you know, our, our options are, are limited. Um, I would echo everything that Mrs. Arshenbo said at the beginning of the meeting about the approach to this. I think that first and foremost, the, the lack of communication or the miscommunication or the unconnected communication is not the fault of the recipient, in my opinion. Um, communication is really the burden of the, the, of the communicator. Um, and, and we need to do a better job at that as a town and as a school system, and that is a strategic priority of mine for the coming year and I think other members of the committee and administration. And we're going to need help in figuring that out and we're not obviously going to solve it tonight, but, but, but it's, it's not your fault. I guess is what I want to say, first and foremost, administrate, I've been through a million budget hearings where I've said, I I can't believe this is happening and somebody from a town administrative or school administrative position will say, yes, but we told you sixteen time, yeah, okay, but I if I didn't receive it, I didn't receive it or I didn't hear it or it didn't, it didn't impact me, then I, it is what it is. I still disagree. Um, and and I think that that's kind of the situation that a lot of people are, are finding themselves in right now. We need to do a better job. Um, the second thing is, is that when it's two weeks before school and you suddenly realize that um, that your plan, your expectations are not reality. Um, it's extremely disruptive to, to, to parents and families. I've been in that situation before. I know people who are in the situation now. Um, and I think that, you know, it's our obligation as your neighbors and townspeople to figure out a way to help you as best we can. And that's not to say that we can do it completely or perfectly, but we need to make an effort to help as best we can because the disruption is not good for anybody, least of all the kids. And, and um, I think we need to be very, very mindful of that, that we don't want to add to the stress of the, of the uh, Labor Day season, um, or, or or add undue stress to the Labor Day season. Um, with respect to the policy, you know, I did some driving around as one of the earlier commenters uh, talked about over the weekend. And a mile and a half from that driveway at Turkey Hill is a long way. Um, Mulpus Road, thirty-some-odd Mulpus Road is a mile and a half from that driveway. You gotta go down Mass Ave, turn left on Towns and Harbor, do that whole thing and then take a right onto, on a Mulpus Road. I can't believe it's within a mile and a half and you're still a couple of houses in the Mulpus Road. Um, you're, if you could just go down Mass Ave, you're past the parking lot to the Cowdree. Um, you, you know, it, it, it's a long way and it's not realistic to really for, in my opinion, anybody to walk uh, back and forth on a daily basis. It's, it's, it's an undue burden. And I think, you know, the expectation is, is that, that parents can do it, but in a lot of cases, parents can't. Um, and, and, and I think we just got to figure that out. But here, but here's the flip side of that argument. First of all, every dollar that we spend on transportation is a dollar we're not spending on education. Um, and I know that they're kind of linked, but we've got to be very careful because we need to work on student achievement. We need to work on extracurriculars. We, and there's so many places that we can spend money and gas and buses suck down a lot of dollars. Um, so I think we need to be mindful of that. Um, and the second part of this is that, you know, a, a lot of people have, I, I bought my house knowing exactly what the conditions are in the area, right? I sat on a board once, a zoning board and we had a, we had a, um, there was a forty B going on in the neighborhood and it was as if people did not know that there was a large piece of u- unused property in their backyard that could be developed someday. Um, there's a concept of buyer beware, caveat emptor, like those things that we learned, most of us in high school civics that does come into play here and, and people, parents do have responsibilities, particularly when you make this investment that is inside of a, of a, of a radius that is and has been part of a policy for, for, for seventeen years. Um, and so I think that we need to think about that policy. We absolutely need to readdress that policy, but it probably needs to be means-tested and it's going to require some work for us to go through. Um, so, you know, not anything that we're, again, going to fix tonight, but I think if the administration, it seems to be, is asking us for greater latitude in helping people within, within the confines of that mile and a half radius, figuring out, you know, exactly what those qualifications are and those details still seem a little squishy to me. Um, but I would absolutely support giving them whatever resources they need to help families over the course of, you know, the next several months. And then let's, let's figure this out um, a- as we move forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Beardmore. Um, my comments basically are, are these. The policy piece needs to be revisited. The um, the clash between the when you can drop a kid off and now we're asking you to walk. Uh, we had no intention of developing that clash, but yeah, we did. And so um, that has to be looked at. That is not tonight's project. But that has to be looked at. That clearly is something that has to be done. The policy of the distance that we're asking kids to walk, that clearly needs to be looked at. But we can't do that tonight either. That certainly can't be fixed overnight. What we can do is um, do as the superintendent suggested and um, vote to accommodate as many people as we can. Now, that, that's really ambiguous, you know, I, that's way out there, but I did ask the superintendent, um, and I will ask her again so she can answer for everybody. Um, what happens if we fill up bus seven, let's say, with a bunch of kids that are within this radius and then five kids move in and a family in a house on that street, what do we do? And so I would ask the superintendent, what do we do?
So in a case like that, um, and this is where the value of the relationship uh, that Liz referred to, the relationship between her and the office manager at D. If there's another bus that has to travel on that same roadway to do their route further out, if, if they have a seat or two open, it's possible that the kiddos wouldn't be on their typical bus number route. a seat or two open, it's possible that the kiddos wouldn't be on their typical bus number route. But they might get picked up by another bus that's coming by them that has a seat. So, you know, we work things out like that. Um, that really is up to the bus company to figure out, is there any way that you can get a child on a bus? Um, you know, and then we're back to the conversation, um, with Mr. Cassidy earlier. Uh, if we can't, if we can't secure additional buses through, through D, then we're going to have to look, um, for other creative solutions to secure some other type of transportation. Um, of course, that will be an added cost. Um, but we're, we're going to have to be compliant, uh, with the law for sure. And bust those kiddos that must be bust by state law and, um, the kiddos who are eligible for the bus on the current policy. Um, so I, I mean, it's, it's a difficult situation. It's possible that I, I may have to tell a family, I cannot get you on a bus right now. But as soon as a seat becomes available, we will notify you and, and your child or children will be on the bus. Um, Liz, anything to add to that?
Well, that's what I was just going to say, what you just said too. Um, we have, when we accommodate all requests as we did in the last two years, we used a running waitlist. So if there was a situation where we needed to get a student on the bus, but we couldn't at that point, I would put them on the waitlist and inform the office manager so that she would know that that person is waiting for the bust and bus and they were next up on the list. Um, so we go back and forth daily on these types of situations, um, and talk about how we can accommodate. I have to say in the last two years, we did accommodate pretty much everyone that we encountered with all different situations. So, um, they may have had to wait on a waitlist for a few days, but then they usually were accommodated. So also, um, there are people that are withdrawing and moving all the time. So that's another way that we could accommodate people as well because sometimes seats do come up on the bus. I did receive emails also from parents over the last two years saying, I know it's a stressful situation on the buses. We really don't need the bus transportation at this time. We're going to remove our children. And so, um, we were very grateful for that, for those parents making that decision to open up a seat on the bus for someone on the waitlist.
So I, I guess, thank you, Liz. Um, I guess what I'm, I'm asking is if somebody moves in outside of two miles, they can't be placed on a waitlist, can they?
We have to find a way to transport them. Um, it's probably not as easy as calling a van transportation company and saying, I need you to come pick up a student at such and such an address tomorrow. So even in those situations, parents are going to have to be, uh, a little bit patient till we can figure out a way to get, get them transported. You know, it, it's not unlike special education situations when there's a team meeting and it's determined that the student should be receiving special ed transportation. We can't, we can't always say, yep, first thing tomorrow at seven o'clock, there'll be somebody outside your front door. Um, we talked to the, to the different, uh, special ed transportation vendor. And, uh, we work out how quickly, when can we start the transportation and we notify the family. Again, we, we do what we can to work as quickly as we can to, to get a resolution uh, for any family. That's how we've been working over the last two years. But again, it's not fully within our control because it's the folks at the office at DBUS that have to look at the logistics and, and figure out what the possible options are and what they can do. And sometimes it's why I can't do anything right now. Um, but we'll look at it again in a week. It's a difficult situation. Which, which is why this becomes if for a long-term solution, this becomes a challenge. Right? It, it's easier when when there's a clear-cut answer in policy said and we just stick to the policy. Whether that's we transport everybody up through fifth grade or eighth grade or what have you. Um, because that's a little bit more manageable than we don't know who in the district might make a request tomorrow for transportation. You know, this is, this is part of the challenge for us is the, again, it, we need the partnership with the families. If, if folks had gotten the message and completed one of those forms and we had more forms complete by the deadline, the bus routes would have been configured to accommodate the way the kids are dispersed around, around town. Um, you know, it's possible at some point, um, during, let's say, a, a break over the holiday, uh, at December, January, that the bus company might say, all right, oh, the only way to resolve this and get people off the waitlist is we're going to have to reconfigure some routes. And they might make some adjustment like that, but again, that's not DBUS does not have um, technology that might be available to other bus companies where they can just plug in a bunch of addresses and the software creates your bus route for you. This is all hand-done by the office manager. So again, we can do what we can do on our end. But we really, we really don't have any control over how quickly they can work on their end to accommodate the requests that we have.
So I think what we have to do here, we have to relook at policy. We have to relook at the other policy about third and fourth graders off the bus. Um, and then we have to, um, if it is the committee's will, we would need to direct the superintendent and staff to one more time, try to fit everybody on the bus. Um, we cannot keep doing this. I, I agree. We have to come up with a firm policy that is fair. Realizing, and I, I think that some parents are, do realize, um, who are aware, but others may not, that um, for this current year, the figure that Mr. Cassidy gave us per bus is a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. So when we add a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars and add a bus, that has to come from somewhere. So it, it's not a quick decision. You know, that, that is a, a major decision to figure that out. What I'm going to do is we're going to move as a committee on this. I have some people that wish to make public comment. I'm going to say because of our protocol, I can't open up public comment right now, but I will. Um, we're going to finish this on this topic and vote on this topic, what we're going to do. Then I will, I believe we're right back. Yes. Then we will come right back to public comment. I hope that's fair. That's the best I can do right now. So according to the way our protocol runs. So, um, what I think I see is we need to put, and this doesn't need to be a motion, I don't think, um, on our agenda in the next, probably not the next agenda, but the one after probably, um, a, a beginning of the discussion, not, not moving on it, but a beginning of this discussion of the transportation policy and the 1.5. Um, I, I think we need to put that on. Um, I, we also need to put on a discussion of, um, who gets off the bus without being watched. That, that needs to go on there. And then I believe we need to take a vote to allow, since we took a vote in December and said they couldn't, um, we need to take a vote to allow superintendent in the office to make accommodations to those people within the 1.5 miles as best they can, as they have done previously. Um, does anyone on the committee think we've missed something? Um, Mr. Beardmore?
Yeah, so, um, it, it sounds like the, as I said earlier, it sounds like the request is to give the administration greater latitude, which I'm generally in agreement with. Um, but it feels like without certain guidelines around priorities or that, that sort of thing, that we could potentially be finding ourselves in greater controversy or an equal access issue or something along those lines. I don't know if Mr. Scull and Brini has any thoughts on that, or if perhaps the administration has any discussions with council. I just, I'm a little bit concerned that without adding some parameters to this, we may be creating a bigger problem.
Mr. Scull and Brini, what do you think of that suggestion?
When, when we talked about this in December, if I'm recalling correctly, the administration had done an analysis regarding, uh, access and access for students with disabilities uh, when they were doing this issue. So I specifically remember Dr. Burnham and Mr. Cassidy talking about accommodations for kids with disabilities. So I, I think that component had already been discussed. Is that not correct? I, I thought we had a pretty lengthy discussion about that.
So specifically though, Mr. Scull and Brini, I'm talking about like Fourteenth Amendment, equal access, e- equal protection kind of stuff, right? So not necessarily protected class, but just like, hey, you gave the guy down the street access to a bus, but you didn't give me, how come? Right? Like that, that.
So I just, I, I want to put this out there that I am not the school lawyer. I am a lawyer on the school committee. And so like, this is kind of like a game show.
Yeah.
Uh, but I would defer to whatever the school district's lawyer says. I'm struggling to see how I don't, like, I really am struggling to see how this would have a Fourteenth Amendment or Fifth Amendment issue based on equal protection. So like, I mean, I also don't know enough about the demographics of parts of Lunenburg. So my understanding of generally the demographics would mean that that would, I don't know. I,
And if you don't know, you don't know. I would still vote. I would still vote with this and just condition it like superintendent should call town, should call council in the morning.
Yes.
Whatever we're doing is, whatever we're doing is copacetic because I just, I, again, I just don't want to create a bigger problem, but I, I would. I don't, I don't, I don't have the wording of emotion in mind, but I think we may be at that point, so.
Carol, can, can I ask that we also put in on the issue or at least not, it doesn't need to be at the same time, but I do think that we need to put on the issue of like emails and outreach to parents because I, I am on the school committee and I can tell you that I struggle to keep up with all of the communications.
Yeah, definitely. We are looking at communication. It's to be honest, when we talk about school committee goals, I think that's the goal. Yeah, I think that may be the whole thing because I think we're going to have to put both feet in because this can't happen again. So, um, so yes, but I'm worried about short-term right now. So I want to take tonight would be for short-term for, to give permission to the superintendent and her team to put as many kids on the bus as humanly possible. Um, for now, while we figure this out. And then we will look at policy in, in the near future, not, not in December. We will look at policy sooner or not later and figure out, do we want to do within a half a mile? Do we want to do within, I mean, a half a mile if it's safe? I don't, I don't know how we determine that. That's a conversation for another day. Today's conversation is all about getting as many kids to school next week as humanly possible. And to me.
I would make a motion then to, to take as a short-term goal, give the superintendent the authority to accommodate as many families as possible with the bus route, provided that she can do so in consultation with council in a way that does not violate any constitutional rights.
I'll second that. Excellent.
Okay. Any more discussion on the motion? All right then, um, Dr. Burnham, could we take a roll call vote?
Yes. Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Layton?
Yeah.
Mr. Scull and Brini?
Yes.
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
And Mrs. Archambeau?
Yes.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much for everything you've done to prepare. I know with the school starting next week and, and you're pulling all these numbers together for us and I appreciate that. And I really appreciate the parents that have come out to talk to us and it's time for public comments then. Um, open to anything, but I suspect we're probably still on the same subject. So, um, I only see a few hands, so I think I can handle it. So could I have, um, Stephanie, if you want to jump in?
Go.
Well, I think we have to understand that we as a district and a town are not like every neighboring district and that there are some situations that are unique to living in a bedroom town like the conditions of the roadways, the lack of sidewalk and some of the other issues that we discussed. And I know that the state law states one thing, but clearly it doesn't work. And it's really frustrating as a parent to have been voicing concern for this since last year and to still be at this point right now where we are supposed to be getting ready for the upcoming school year. And really, we still don't have any definitive answer on whether or not the transportation will be, will be ready or whether or not we'll, we'll be able to get it or when we'll be able to get it. And, and that is a major strain for working families. This is, this is a big part of the issue that we have in the first place with the drop-off times and the inability to get busing within 1.5 miles. And it is, it's, it's just a bunch of issues mixed together. And having to do this again is very difficult. And I don't know if I'll even be able to send my kids to school because last year I had to take time off from work and my wife took time off from work and we've had other issues throughout the year and we can't do that again. So I really don't know what's going to come of this. I just know that this is crippling for my household. And, you know, I know that the district has issues. Every district has issues. Every district has changing enrollments. But we cannot just simply state the problems and have this somehow magically resolved. I think we need to look at this really and truly and start moving towards a solution because this is unfair. I, I work in a neighboring district. I've worked in two other neighboring districts which share borders with our town. And I don't understand how we have this type of an issue. We are a wonderful town. We seem to have more together. We have a smaller population. How the hell are we losing services that we've always depended on and we don't have anything in place? And I know that there's been efforts made, but if the efforts aren't gaining traction, we need to do something else.
Thank you. And Jennifer?
Where'd I go?
We're there.
Oh, there we go. Okay. Places in the screen. I'm sorry. Um, so I know, Dr. Burnham, you talked about the, um, possibility of the before-school program at the middle school, I mean, at the Turkey Hill um, and whatnot, and didn't have any takers for the positions and whatnot. Um, is there consideration for the high school? I guess my consider, my thing is, you know, they're old enough to kind of deal with themselves and, you know, sit quietly in a cafeteria and either do their homework or chat with friends and be, you know, together and whatnot with the old, um, high school. My daughter did that for a couple of years and they went in there and they never seemed to be really in any incidents and they were unsupervised. Um, I also think too, not only would that help some of us working families and the safety of some of the roadways and whatnot, if they could be in there by like, say, seven fifteen, but, you know, it would significantly ease that tremendously horrid drop-off time within a fifteen-minute span, um, that can be dangerous with the traffic all the way out Mass Ave. So I just wondered if, how it was that, um, you know, was that even talked about, considered? So I just wondered if, how it was that, um, you know, was that even talked about, considered, what were any um outcomes of that?
I'm just, Archambeau, do you want me to address that?
Yes, I think we should.
Yes, so the plan is, and the positions are posted for tutor at um, the Turkey Hill. The middle school and the high school, and I will be honest, I am not in favor of opening the doors. And having kids in the building unsupervised. Um, I am in favor of finding a way to provide that before-school, um, extra help and tutoring for them, absolutely. Um, I, I, again, if the positions are posted, we're, we're just not getting any applicants right now. But as soon as I can fill those positions. We will, and we'll push that uh communication out to families, that this is a new program that's available. I did hope to have it in place, I know it would have been a great help in your particular situation. Um, but again, with, with no staff to put in that position, I, I'm not gonna be ready to open that program uh next week.
I guess my concern is, you know, kids are all over the school after school, between sports and activities and whatnot. And they, and unsupervised and seem to be doing very well. I just figured the first, you know, half hour, forty-five minutes before school, you know, I mean, there are teachers out and about the building. You know, seeing kids, you know, if they're in a ruckus or doing things and they lose the privilege of coming in early, but, um, you know, I certainly understand. You know, um, and all that, it just, you know, again, I think it would hugely ease your traffic concerns with Mass Ave and everything as well, so. Thank you.
Thank you, um, Mr. Beardmore?
Yeah, I just wanted to, um. Thank everybody for being here tonight and for participating, um, and, and also thank you, Mrs. Archambeau and, and. Uh, Dr. Burnham, as I mentioned earlier, um, I was appointed to the school committee about a month ago, and I probably had. Eighteen conversations with Mrs. Archambeau in the last month. And, and probably traded a dozen emails with superintendent and, um. And I, I know that my thought process is a little different than other people, and I, I appreciate your patience. And your willingness to answer my questions and your willingness to engage, and uh, I'm looking forward to bringing some of these ideas forward. And I also wanna ask the people who are online tonight and participating, or those watching at home or on Facebook or wherever. Um, you've gotten a taste of some of the big issues that we have to deal with as a school committee and as a community. Over the course of the next several months, and we highlighted the transportation policy clearly needs some work and attention. Communications and, and community engagement clearly needs some work and attention. And we cannot do it without your help, your feedback, your ideas, your participation, your support. Um, so please keep an eye on agendas, emails. Social media, wh- wherever the communication comes in, it might not be perfect for a while, but. Um, we, we, I appreciate your comments tonight, I, I think I can speak for the rest of the committee. That we all do, and, and as well as the emails, we got a bunch of emails too. Um, and, uh, and I just wanna encourage people to, to stay engaged, because we need your help, thank you.
All right, and I see one more hand, Megan Bob Elliott?
Hi, um, so I just wanted to say, I, I work at a vocational high school, and our. Transportation issues are definitely far more complicated than one for Ludenburg. But, um, I, I get to work at six forty-five, seven o'clock in the morning, and there are a handful of students that. Are hanging out in the main lobby, um, you know, they're in high school, so they're on their phones, they're half asleep. But they're fine, and that's, that's the situation that their transportation issue allows. I know that we can't do that with younger kids that need to be supervised, but I would say from seventh grade on. You know, if we can't get every kid on the bus, there's no reason why kids that are older that. You know, are, are capable of, of hanging out in the lobby, they're much safer in the lobby of a high school unsupervised than they are walking up and down Mass Ave. Unsupervised, you know, in snowbanks, it, it just doesn't make sense to me how. You could say that they need to be supervised if, if they're hanging out in the school lobby, but. They're obviously in much more danger if they're walking to and from school without any supervision as well, um, so.
Okay, thank you for the comment, I appreciate it. If we are all public commented out, I don't see anybody else. Let me do my, oh, see, I hit the wrong button to do my quick check, so it's gonna take longer. I don't see anybody's hand up, so I'm gonna assume we are set. Um, we are on to topics for future discussions. I know I had, we have to revisit the protocol on the next, on the next meeting. We have committee assignments. Um, because since we have gained a member, we need to talk about that. We have um action on the APA letters that hopefully I will have done by then. Um, we have um probably a report on how the transportation is going. And um some beginning discussions. Of what we think may be a reasonable transportation policy. Does anybody have other things for our next meeting that Tony wants to be less than two and a half hours? Nothing else, I, I think that's probably a good start, okay.
Protocols, right, you, you mentioned.
Yes, that was the first thing I mentioned. That's okay, I appreciate that, it's not, wouldn't be the first time I forgot. So, um, that being the case, everybody's all set, then I would uh take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn at eight forty-seven PM.
Thank you, and a second please, Mr. Leighton?
I'll second that motion.
All right, and a roll call vote?
Mr. Beardmore?
Aye.
Mr. Scullenbrini?
Aye.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yeah.
Mrs. Archambeau?
Yes, thank you very much, everyone, we really appreciate your input. We're, we're always glad to have a lot of people on the call.
Have a good evening.
Hey, everybody.
Good night, thank you.